Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, October 7th, 2020. Could we have a roll call, please?
Pfaff.
Here.
Nortentoff.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Garrity.
Here.
Bow.
Here.
Pesak.
Here.
Sula.
Present. We do have a quorum. We have 100 percent. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, at its states America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just for the record, some of our members are participating remotely as allowed by the governor's order for, not really an order, but governor's COVID-19 adjustment to the procedures for public meetings. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our meeting that was held on August 19th. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or changes? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Let's see who that was. Was that you, Dave? Okay. Motion by Mr. Nortentoff to have a second.
Okay.
Was that Mr. Garrity?
Garrity.
Okay.
Yes.
Second by Mr. Garrity. Could we have a roll call, please?
Pfaff.
Aye.
Nortentoff.
Aye.
Riley.
Here.
Garrity.
Here.
Bow.
Aye.
Aye.
Pesak.
Aye.
Sula.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the meeting that was held on September 16th, 2020. Does anybody have any changes, questions, or comments? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pfaff.
Bow will second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bow. Roll call, please.
Pfaff.
Aye.
Nortentoff.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Bow.
Aye.
Pesak.
Aye.
Sula.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for a major amendment to the Greystone PUD for the property located at 7735 Route 132. Whose giving staff report?
Yep.
Clara? Okay, go ahead.
Yes. Kensington Development Partners is petitioning for a major modification to the existing planned unit development on property located at 7735 Route 132 on the southeast corner of Route 132 in Rollins Road. The amendments proposed are as follows. One, amend, clarify that education facility includes a university vocational school as a permitted use. Two, add drive-through restaurant and outdoor dining associated with the restaurant as a permitted use, subject to the use standards and the zoning ordinance. Three, amend the lighting standards to be consistent with the current zoning ordinance. Four, amend to provide an additional ground sign along Grand Avenue and permit all tenants' representation on any sign located on the site. And five, amend setbacks as follows. Reduce the building setback from Rollins Road property line from 290 feet to 40 feet. Reduce the parking setback from Rollins Road property line from 31 feet to 25 feet. And establish a zero-foot parking setback to any newly created commercial lot interior to the site. In regards to these matters, the Planning and Zoning Board will make a recommendation that will be forwarded to the Village Board for their determination. The applicant is in attendance in person tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Clara. As this is a public hearing, I would request that anybody from the petitioner, general public, who intend to give testimony or ask questions, to please stand and be sworn in by the village attorney. If you could stand, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you. And just for the record, I guess I should mention that this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube in a view-only mode. And I've also been advised that staff has received absolutely no comments from anybody in the general public that need to be read into the record. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to the petitioner, and if you could just please start with saying your name and address and affiliation for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Ray. I'm the Director of Development Services with Kensington Development Partners. My first time presenting through a mask, so if you can't hear me, please let me know. So first of all, thank you for taking the time and reviewing our amendment to the PUD for the parcel located at 7735 Grand Avenue. Our goal is to take a vacant store and create a redevelopment aligned with the village's goals. Tracy, would you mind flipping the backside, please? Thank you. Perfect. So this is just an overview of the current site as it is now. And then I think if you click one more time, there you go. Thank you. So our plan that we are proposing is turning the vacant Lowe's building into a vocational educational facility for the College of Lake County. And also, we would like to retain the ability to create an outlot for a full-service restaurant that we are currently working with staff on the re-subdivision process for that corner parcel with. So this is our first, I think this is more of a clarification than a change to the, we just wanted to make certain that an educational facility, university, and vocational use for the existing Lowe's is permitted under the PUD. And then also that a full-service restaurant, outdoor dining, or drive-through, drive-in, carry-out restaurant will be permitted under the PUD as well. The second one is, we would like to bring the lighting standards up to be consistent with what is currently allowed under the zoning ordinance within the village. Third would be to allow for a third sign along Grand, currently there's one sign at the corner of Grand and Rollins, and then one along Rollins. So we would like to have two, so to add a third, we would allow, like the ability to have two on Grand Avenue and then keep that one on Rollins. And also the ability to have the tenants, which would be two, to have their marketing on those, any of those signs. So the third sign would be used in line with whatever the current standards are currently. We would like to make sure there be a zero-foot parking setback in the new area of lots on our commercial lot A. And then also, the current PUD is set up for the Lowe's parcel, so there's a very large setback currently. So we'd like to change that to allow for 40 feet from Rollins Road to any future building on that new outlot. And then 25 foot Rollins for a future lot at the outlot as well. This is just a little bit, we had our engineer draft up the conceptual site plan. You'll see it up in the top-left corner for what would be the future restaurant, and that would be the lot associated with it, which is about two and a half acres. That's the end of our presentation. If you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Ask members of the Planning and Zoning Board if they have any questions. I'll start with the remote participants. Josh, do you have anything?
No, I read through the staff package, and it, I don't have a lot of questions. I actually like the idea. I would be supportive in general, in principle.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. Laura?
No, pretty much the same. The parking lot would stay the same.
The parking lot would actually get a little bit larger because what was currently the garden center for the Lowe's would be removed. And the way the parking works out, we're able to squeeze more parking in there even with the new restaurant.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Tim?
Yes. Do we have any, and I might have missed it, I don't think.
Tim, can you speak up a little bit? We can hardly hear you.
Hours of operation?
For the educational facility, they're still working on their exact programming, but there would be a daytime component and then an evening component where, like after work, people would go and have classes in a, like an adult-type of setting.
What about the restaurant?
So we do not have a definite user for that currently. So I don't, I don't have specific hours that that would be operating, but it would be in line with whatever the village ordinance would require.
So just within the, with the Planning and Zoning Board, you know, members, I just would be interested to hear if we've had any, it sounded like Chairman Sula, that we haven't had any communication from the neighbors. Has there been any outreach or anybody to express any concern, written, verbal, or no?
Staff followed the normal procedures of notifying all property owners within, was it 500 feet?
Yes.
500 feet, and it entailed, what did I hear, 200 and some? How many?
Like 230, I think. Yeah, over 200.
So that was sent to 230 individual residences? And there's been absolutely no adverse comments as a result of that? There's been no favorable comments either? I mean, it was pretty much a non-event. The matter before us is one of whether or not we think we should, whether or not we should make a recommendation of the Village Board that it's okay to have a restaurant on that corner.
Yeah, I think generally, I'll end on this, I'm generally in favor of it, like the other commissioners have expressed, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Edwin?
I have maybe two quick questions. There's something in here about preserving the landscaping buffer in between Rollins Road and the property, but they're changing the setback on the parking? Was it 30 and they're reducing that to 25?
There are sections of the Rollins Road that has a 25-foot setback and sections that have a 30, I think a 31-foot setback.
Okay.
Most of the landscaping is outside of that.
Okay.
And our code would read that if they remove anything, that they have to replace it. So if they did in that area encroach the five or six feet out to the 25 feet, they would have to either transplant it or replace in accordance with the woodland ordinance.
Okay. It's a pretty good buffer anyway, so I don't have a problem with that then.
And just to clarify, you know, they already have the right to put a restaurant on that corner. I mean, this is zoned commercially. They can subdivide it anytime they want to. The clarification on the restaurant is that when we initially entered into this planned unit development, we used to require a special use permit for drive-through restaurants, and we used to require a special use permit for outdoor dining when there was liquor license associated with the restaurant. We've changed that when we adopted the new zoning ordinance, and we have use standards where if they meet the use standards, you can do a drive-through restaurant by right. So that's what they're asking for, to bring it up to current code. If they meet those use standards, they want to be able to do a drive-through restaurant by right. They also want to be able to do outdoor seating by right in accordance with our current code.
Right. Because the PUD didn't allow that.
Correct.
Yeah, I understand that. I like the idea of the restaurant there. I think it would have been great for Lowe's to have something out there. Maybe drew more traffic to the site because it was kind of an odd location for them. One other quick question, and I don't think it really matters, but this is an educational facility, which we already have that in there, right? To some degree?
We do. It's, so the, again, the planned unit development is from, originally from the 80s, and then it was amended in the 90s. So they just want a clarification. I think it's written in the planned unit development, I think it just says "education facility," and our current code breaks it into vocational and university. So they just wanted to clarify by wrapping both of those into the planned unit development so that what they're doing, there wouldn't be any question that this isn't allowed use. So it's more of a clarification. You are correct. Education facility is listed as a permitted use in the planned unit development.
Okay. My question about that then was that the village generates no revenue from a property like that, right? I mean, other than the restaurant?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct, it is correct.
All right. But it's allowed anyway, so, all right.
Brian?
I have no comments.
Okay. I guess my just general comment is.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry, Dave. I'm not used to somebody being out there.
Thank you. Yeah. If I understand correctly, we're looking at this conceptually. I mean, we're looking to clean up the use list a little bit, but in a sense, this is a concept. And so my question number one is, given that, it's also conceptually possible that these uses don't actually come to fruition, and that Lowe's can end up being some other use, the Lowe's building, and that an outlot could be some other type of use other than a restaurant. And so I opened this up mainly about the signage. A, do we really, are we convinced that we need a third sign for this property, number one? Number two, the requests, and the reason I bring this up is because they want to leave it open-ended, to have as many tenants as possible available to be on that sign, which indicates to me, like right now, conceptually, we're talking about only two users for this entire site. Why the concern about, you know, whether or how many tenants can be permitted? Like, what if the Lowe's building is all carved up into numerous different uses, and all of a sudden, we've got eight or 10 different, you know, tenants and an outlot all fighting for signage space? It gets kind of, we've had these situations, I guess, come up before in the village where we have these very large, you know, signs where everybody's fighting for their six inches on there, and it kind of defeats the purpose. Our signage was designed to more identify the center itself and not so much every single tenant that's within that center. So I just want to make sure that we're all talking about that conceptually as well. If we sign off on this open-ended, how many, you know, a third sign, do we feel compelled, if there's only two uses on this? I mean, is it really necessary, I think, for a third sign? Number three, do we want to leave it open-ended as to the number of tenant panels that could end up on a sign, or all the signs? And that's the only thing I want to bring up. Everything else seems like it's just maintenance, getting things in line.
Okay. Tracy, can you just kind of clarify whether or not, because my understanding from what I'm hearing is that what they're asking for would kind of bring them in compliance with our underlying signing or sign ordinance, with the exception perhaps of the additional sign that they're requesting.
So.
And the only real thing that's, and it's really a technical matter, is that there would be a need to allow off-site advertising because the out, there'd be two lots within what's now one lot, and technically, if the sign was on one of those lots, the other lot wouldn't have, by ordinance, the ability to have a presence on that sign. Am I missing something?
I'm just checking real quick on the existing, so the planned unit development allows two signs right now, and those signs are relatively, I believe they're both 60 square feet. Or 60 square feet? Yeah. So they're relatively small. They're not, they're proposing to keep those regulated by the regulations in the planned unit development, so not changing that. The one sign that they're asking to add to the planned unit development would operate under our current sign code, so it would have to meet our height, our size, and within our sign code, we have a limit on the number of tenant panels that you can put on by right.
That's what I thought.
I think it's four. Yeah, it's four permitted. And then there's an opportunity to increase that, I think, via the minor. Yeah. Sign exception, and then above that, you would have to go in for a special use. Anything above four tenants on that new sign that goes out there would have to come before the Planning and Zoning Board for review and approval.
Okay, so then to address Mr. Nortentoff's concern, wouldn't we be better off to amend the PUD to reflect the underlying sign ordinance as opposed to just a blanket, no matter how many tenants there are, they could, they could put the signage out there?
Yes. If that was their intent, and that was, my understanding was that sign was to adhere to the underlying sign code. I think they just wanted to make sure that anything that was off-premise could go on to a sign that was not on the site.
Yeah, but I think, I think Mr. Nortentoff has raised a really good point, is that we kind of, at least I kind of fell into a trap, looking at it as, the Lowe's building is primarily going to be an educational facility, but that's not to say at some point in time, it doesn't get chopped up, and there could be, you know, many additional units. And I agree with where Dave is going in that perhaps we'd be better served to make it adhere to the underlying sign.
I would agree with that. I just want to make sure that that was the petitioner's intent, and that they don't have an objection to that, or would like to.
I agree, and that would have been my next question.
Okay.
We have no problem with the signs being brought up to whatever your current standards are, so if that only allows for the four tenants, we have no problem with that.
Okay, good. Dave, did you have anything else? I'm sorry, I missed you before.
No problem.
Okay. I mean, when I take a step back and look at everything here, what strikes me is that there's a real attempt here to take the inconsistencies that are in the current PUD and bring them up to zoning standards. And one of the comments in our notes that I, that I thought was really important is that it's really difficult to manage a bunch of different exceptions, and this goes a long way to potentially just making everything a lot easier to manage on behalf of staff. At this time, I'm going to open the floor to the public. There is nobody here that would like to speak, so I'm going to close the floor to the public, go back for another round of questions. Josh?
No, I don't have any more questions. Thank you for the discussion.
Okay. Laura?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Tim?
Nothing else.
Okay. Edwin?
I would say that I have no problem with the third sign. I think they have enough frontage to allow for it.
Okay.
So I don't have a problem with the third sign.
Okay. Brian?
No comments.
Dave?
I'm okay, thank you.
Okay, and I'm okay as well. Unless there's any other discussion, and I'm not sensing a need, we don't need to break this up into five motions, do we?
No.
Okay, okay. So at this time, it would be appropriate for someone to advance a recommendation to the Village Board. Mr. Nortentoff has raised his hand.
I move that we forward a favorable recommendation on the petition of Kensington Development Partners for a major amendment to the planned unit development for 7735 Route 132 as follows. I move on to amend and clarify that education facility includes a university or vocational school as a permitted use. Number two, to add a drive-through restaurant and outdoor dining associated with a restaurant as a permitted use, subject to the use standards and the zoning ordinance. Number three, to amend the lighting standards to be consistent with the current zoning ordinance. Number four, to allow one additional ground sign along Grand Avenue and permit all signs on the site to be used by any tenant within the development, provided all signs comply with the current village signage code. And number five, amend the building setback from Rollins Road from 290 feet to 40 feet, the party setback from Rollins Road from 31 to 25 feet, and establish a zero-foot parking setback from lot lines interior to the commercial lot A.
Bow will second.
Seconded by Mr. Bow. Any discussion?
I just have a question or a clarification. Mr. Nortentoff's motion made it sound like all three signs were going to be in conformance with the underlying sign code, and I believe unless the petitioner has changed, that they wanted to keep the two existing signs in conformance with the planned unit development.
But we just had this conversation.
Sorry, then I missed it.
No, it's okay.
But don't they comply anyway?
They are shorter, they're smaller and shorter.
They're smaller, but I believe they can actually be taller per the PUD.
So under the current code, they could be taller than what they are.
Taller and bigger.
So that's, I guess, what the issue is. Taller versus the number of tenants you can put on the sign.
Okay, because we didn't talk about height before.
Yeah, under the PUD, they're allowed to be 15 feet in height and 60 square feet. And the current code would allow 12 feet in height in between 60 and 150 square feet in size, depending on the sign type.
Okay. Dave, did you want to amend your motion, or are you okay with it?
Well, I think number four, the way it got read into the record is allow one additional ground sign, right? So that's, that's what is going to now comply with our current sign ordinance.
Okay.
So I think we're okay.
Okay.
They're going to, they would be bound by the existing PUD as to the two existing signs. The third sign would be subject to the village's current sign ordinance.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that, but just with the question, did we want to have anything into the record formally that capped the number of tenant panels on the two signs on the PUD to four tenant panels?
The PUD already, I just closed the page on that. Just closed the page. Okay, the wording in the PUD for the monument signs is that. So it's limited to name and logo.
Is it silent almost to how many names and logos there can be?
Well, so this was done at the time of Lowe's, so.
So it was envisioning one.
Yeah, right.
Okay. So.
I think it could come under the regular sign code.
Well, I.
Well, I don't think we wanted to open the door.
No.
For everything else to go with it, including height.
Sounds like he needs to amend his motion to like just include the.
I think you need to amend your motion.
To include the original language that was in number four here.
I think you need to amend the motions so that the two existing signs have the current conditions placed upon them, and the additional monument sign would comply to the, to our new signage ordinance.
Right.
Okay.
And so.
Am I saying that correct?
And so.
One way, though, is to consider the, you know, the applicant has asked just to add that one.
Okay.
So it might be easier than just to.
Might be easier to just be silent on the other two.
Correct.
Okay.
Unless you wanted to.
Right, but his current.
If the number of panels you thought had to be addressed.
His current motion said that all three signs have to comply with the current.
Yeah.
Sign code.
That.
So really, I think he should amend his motion to, you know, strike his condition number four and just put the original number four back in. I mean.
I think you're right. So we should be silent as to the current signs because they're not asking for a change to those, but we should make a commentary in terms of the conditions on the additional sign.
The applicant looks like.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So we would like the ability to have the multiple tenants on the existing signs? That was the intent. And then the new sign, if it was added, it would be in compliance with whatever current village code is.
So then I think Mr. Nortentoff's motion stands.
Yes, if you want to acquiesce to the petitioner.
Or, or what if we leave number four to its original state and then add another separate bullet point that just simply adds a condition to the two existing signs that just caps the number of tenant panels at four?
Right.
But doesn't change anything else but the underlying.
Correct.
Signs, you know.
And it keeps the same dimensions.
Yeah, you could do that. Yeah, okay.
Is that all right, Brian?
Yeah, so you're going to just, yeah, you're going to amend four and then add six.
Yep.
Standby.
Mr. Chairman, I wish to amend my motion to strike my original.
Can I make a suggestion? Maybe we, I don't know if you can do this, can we delete the original motion since we haven't voted on it?
I think the motion is, instead of having him read it back in.
Okay.
I think he just has to restate Subparagraph four and then add Paragraph six.
Okay.
Fair enough.
And then the minutes will reflect.
Because we're going to capture this. This is a recommendation.
Yes.
You know, so there's, we'll be able to wordsmith a little bit.
Okay.
You know, to some extent.
Okay.
For the ordinance itself.
Okay. As long as it's clear to the Village Board what our intent is.
What the recommendation is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I wish to amend my motion to strike what I read in as Subparagraph four to as follows. New four is allow one additional ground sign along Grand. New four is allow one additional ground sign along Grand Avenue and permit all signs on the site to be used by any tenant within a development. And then I would like to add Bullet Point number six to the motion where...
You wanted, on Point number four, you wanted to stipulate that it...
That the new sign complies with the current Village sign code.
Right, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, so Bullet Point number six, then, that the two existing signs within the PUD would then be capped at four tenant panels, so it would align with the third and new sign.
Okay. Are you okay with the amendment?
I will second that amendment.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? On the motion, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Pfaff?
Aye.
Nordentoff?
Aye.
Riley?
Aye.
Garrity?
Aye.
Bow?
Aye.
Pasak?
Aye.
Sula?
Aye, motion carries. As you know, we are recommending...
Wait, wait, that was just a motion on his amendment. Now we need to do roll call on the overall motion.
But that was the overall.
I'll defer to Attorney Winter, but...
Well...
I thought...
Yeah, it says, we could do it either way. I mean, I think...
We didn't vote on the original motion.
We did, as amended.
As amended, yes.
Yeah.
We had one vote.
Because we didn't originally vote.
Right.
So then, so before the vote was taken, the Chair accepted an amendment to the original motion. So I think generally, we've allowed that to be compliant.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, that's how we've always...okay.
There is a separate way of doing it.
Oh, okay.
But...
All right. Okay. As I was saying, we are a recommending body to the Village Board, and staff will let you know when the Village Board will make the final decision on the matter. Thank you, and good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, our next meeting is on the calendar for October 21st. No meeting?
Not yet. Well, no public hearings.
No public hearing, but it's possible there might be some administrative things, so stay tuned for further developments on that. There's nobody here from the public, so I'm not going to open the floor to the public for public comment. Motion to adjourn, it'd be in order.
Motion to adjourn. Bowell, second.
Second by Mr. Bow.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Pfaff?
Aye.
Nordentoff?
Aye.
Riley?
Aye.
Garrity?
Aye.
Bow?
Aye.
Pasak?
Aye.
Sula?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the wonderful weather that we're supposed to have for the next days.